Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, June 19th, 2018. I will read the agenda. We may take some of these things out of turn. At seven o'clock, we will do community input. Seven oh five, we will execute open space deed covenant for Garrison Place. Seven fifteen, complete streets policy update. Seven thirty, approval of the FY 2019 payroll changes. At seven forty-five, annual appointments. At eight o'clock, county administrators' report. At eight fifteen, the Carlisle Municipal Aggregation Public Information Session. At nine o'clock, Board of Selectmen liaison reports. At nine ten minutes, nine fifteen, executive session, litigation, non-union bargaining. And at nine thirty, we will be adjourning. So, hello, everybody.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Yes, I did miss the last one. You were so fast.
I know.
Yeah, that was great.
I got here as you were closing it up. So, we'll start off with community input. Is Bill? Do you have any community input? Okay, you are a community?
Bob.
Bob, do you have any community input?
Uh.
Okay. CCTV guy.
Brendan.
Brendan has none.
Okay, so we will move on to seven oh five, executing the open space deed covenant for Garrison Place. Tim, could you bring us through this?
Sure, sure. You've got in your package the deed from the developer of Garrison Place, Brendan Properties, that conveys the open space portion of the development to the town. And we've got a suggested motion for the board to act upon. I did notice that the developer labeled the Conservation Commission as the Conversation Commission, so I think that's gonna have to change before they can sign it.
Especially since I'm off.
But the Board of Selectmen page looks to be accurate.
Where is that? Because it's right?
Right after the selectmen's signature.
Oh, at the end, not within the document.
Not within the document.
Can we have a Conversation Commission?
We should.
I would love that.
You would be chair.
I'd be the only one on it.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve and execute the grant of easement to the Town of Carlisle by acting by and through the Conservation Commission for conservation, agricultural, and passive recreation purposes for the parcel of land being shown as open space parcel A on a plan entitled Garrison Place, a senior residential open space community in Carlisle, Massachusetts, dated February 21st, 2014, and revised through November 9th, 2016, prepared by Stabskey &amp; McNary, Inc., recorded with the Middlesex Registry of Deed in Plan Book 242, page 142.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. I have some questions. So, this has been the Conservation Commission has seen this, Tim?
Yes, they provided it to us.
Okay.
Surprise Sylvia, she's usually got the eagle eye. She would have noticed that.
And did the planning board see this?
I don't.
This would have been a part of, because of the agreement, right?
Conditions.
Because of the zoning.
I would think so. I don't know that for certain, though.
Okay.
Sylvia provided this to us from the, I'm sorry, George Mansfield emailed both CONSCOM and us and to ask if we could execute this at the earliest possible opportunity. So, I guess it originated with the planning board.
Okay, so both of the parties impacted most are?
Have been notified.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody?
Okay, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Babs, David? Okay, passes unanimously.
Just regulate that for the board's signature.
Do you know if anybody was planning on coming in for the complete streets policy, Tim?
I don't believe so. I think originally, we thought that the board might be in a position to approve it this evening. It's been through both the CONSCOM, Planning Board, and what, and the Historical Commission. CONSCOM and Planning Board didn't have any changes in both, recommend approval. The Historical Commission wanted to have some time to make some comments, so.
Okay. All right, so we'll hold off on?
So, we'll hold off on that.
I want to hear their comments here.
Right. Okay, so we will hold off on any votes.
I did tell them that intently, the board didn't want a policy that ties your hands, that you want the maximum flexibility.
We want them to be reasonable.
Right, possible.
As possible.
So.
To be historical commission and not the hysterical commission.
Okay. I guess, so, did anybody have any, I'm trying to debate whether or not I'm gonna wait till nine fifteen on this?
Yeah, you might as well. I mean, just in case somebody comes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might as well.
Payroll changes?
We're gonna hang off on that, too. So, let's go to, what's that?
What are you gonna hold off on? The?
Payroll changes?
Oh.
So, how about if we jump to the county administrator's report for a couple of things? And then, and then I can talk about just a couple of other things. Actually, why don't I just jump into those? Because that probably will take a shorter period of time. The one thing is, so, goals. So, this is just to get, you know, we're not gonna be deciding on anything or anything today. Just want to get everybody thinking about them. So, if we take a look at the FY 18 goals that were adopted on eight twenty-nine, it'd be great if we could adopt goals a little bit earlier. And so, I'd like to change it up a little bit this year, this is what I would propose, is that we keep it kind of fewer, more tangible goals than what we had this year. And, you know, if we look at our goals for 2018, they're, you know, they're all really great goals. Some of them, you know, we hit, but we didn't hit a lot of them, and we didn't really.
Come back to them very often.
So, what I'd like to do is, we come back to these at least quarterly?
And chat about them?
But I would like to keep them much higher level or much more targeted into real things that there is, you know, somebody who owns it, somebody who's coming back and reporting on it, rather than kind of these visionary things that we're just really never gonna get to. So, you know, for instance, there are things in here where we, I think, you know, the amount, the goal, the goal was too early a goal, so we didn't actually get to it. You know, and now, now this year, it kind of really hits, and, you know, probably we should have formulated a succession plan for the fire chief. But, you know, this year, and I want to talk about that in a second, this year in particular, I think that needs to be a goal. So, anyway, take a look through these goals. I guess if you were on the board last year, with everybody but Alan, between now and our next meeting, you know, go through the goals and just write down how you think we did on them. And then come up with, you know, what you think some good new goals would be. And, you know, I mean, to me, it seems like they would be real, I'm trying to avoid pulling out my computer where I have a whole bunch of notes written down on this, but, you know, they would be real tangible goals, like, for instance, to give some examples, we need to, we need to bring on a new fire chief, right? That's happening this year. I would like to really work with the personnel board and formulate better, kind of like, what our processes are and what our communication is with them. And, you know, not that they're doing anything wrong at all, but just really kind of work, work out better how we work with them. I'd like to make sure that in town, you know, I believe we're supposed to be doing annual reviews, just making sure that we're doing that. And I know that we are not doing some of the annual reviews that we're supposed to be doing to some of the staff that report directly to us. So, you know, I think those types of goals, I think it's great having, you know, focus on the operating budget. That's really, really great. But let's make sure that all of them are tangible, all of them are measurable.
Can I make a suggestion? Instead of calling the goals, if we called them action items, do you think that would kind of cut through some of that murkiness? That would make us understand that these are things we really want to accomplish. It's not, you know, kind of more like?
Yep, that would be fine with me.
I'm just.
Yep. I think the previous years, in the year before this, we called it an agenda item. They were agenda items.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, anybody have any questions? So, I'd like to put this on our agenda for next year, uh, next.
Next year sounds good.
Great, let's put it on there.
Yeah. For the next meeting.
I think that's great.
The other thing is, is in a little bit, we're gonna be doing appointments. But in our next meeting, I'd also like to, in our next meeting, I would like us to assign liaisons before we get too far into the year. So, take a look, let, you know, write down if you want to change where you are. And Alan, you don't have to just automatically take all of clods, you know?
Is there a list somewhere?
It's right behind the goals.
Yeah.
Right behind the goals, in the same section. It's the third page in that section.
There you go, the purple.
Okay, so.
Oh, there you are. You're in it, yeah.
There we are, got it, okay.
So, take a look at those, and we will fight it out in our next meeting. And probably ask Bill to be on all of them.
He's gonna have some time, apparently.
Yeah.
All right. I think we're close enough now.
Yeah.
Let's jump into the complete streets. Okay, so this is the policy that we're required to do in order to get, become a part of the project.
To be eligible for the construction funding eventually.
And this is modeled on other towns?
Modeled mostly on the town of Harvard, which is.
So, it says Harvard all the way throughout it?
Yeah.
I think, I think the Harvard's language is alongside what the committee's proposed, just to show that it's indeed similar.
Okay.
Like on page 11, yeah.
Small rural town with a town center that's not dissimilar to ours. And the idea is to get a passing grade, but not too high of a grade, as far as complying with the state standards, and to give ourselves some wiggle room as far as some of the design goes. As I mentioned, Historical Commission will be submitting some comments on that. CONSCOM took a vote to support it. I believe Planning Board, I don't know if they took a vote or not, but they did support it and didn't have any changes at this time.
Okay, so the idea is that, you know, page four on would be, you know, would just be consolidated. It would just be the area where it said draft. That would be part of our plan.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
And it was reported last time that nobody's ever flunked. Everybody has all met, you know, with this kind of verbiage, everybody's all met the minimum requirements. And my comment was, you know, this basically says, we'll try to do all of this unless we can. I mean, that's the way, there's an out in every part of this, so.
That's what our goals should say.
So, it'll be interesting to see what the Historical Commission comes up with, because, I mean, it's conforming to the standards that already exist for the state.
The sensitivity paragraph there is pretty, you know, squishy as far as, you know, the maximum extent possible.
Yeah.
If it's practical, we'll do these things. But that's pretty unique in terms of its character.
Page 11, thank you.
Guarantee that that's the case.
Yeah, well, it does, I mean, it does put a higher.
You can't do a four-foot bike lane, you know, on every street.
But it does say, we have to purposefully look at these things each time we do road maintenance and upgrades and that sort of thing.
Okay. Any other comments or discussions about complete streets? And we'll vote on it next week, I mean, next?
Next time.
Year?
I think it's two year.
I just can't get the right date.
Kick it to the next one.
Yeah, all right.
That's what I did.
Okay, so we'll look at this next time. Thank you. Okay, approval of the 2019 payroll changes. Half an hour early, I mean, it's early.
These are the changes in employee payroll that reflects the 2.0% cost of living adjustment, salary adjustment throughout. And it's been reviewed and recommended by the personnel board.
This is just?
Form of, but you do have.
Oh, yeah, I mean, this is, this is basically just the calculations for what we already voted, right?
Yes.
Correct, the 2% for the magnitude involved. And it does show the bargaining.
And so, the personnel board looked, because personnel board's recommendation was actually different than what we did. They've looked at this again, and they've said it looks good, or?
Yes, yes, they have, yeah.
Okay.
Is there any way, for information purposes only, that we can get all town employees, a list of all town employees?
Oh, we certainly can. It's public information, as you know. You mean to include the school department as well?
Yes.
We certainly can. These are the ones you need to approve, but.
Yes, but I would, for information, I would very much like to see that information.
All right.
If I'm the only one.
Yeah, I don't know what you would want to do with that information.
I would, I want to, I took a shot at putting on one page, basically, all the groups of employees that we have, and what their average salaries are, what their hourly rates are, how many hours they work on average, what the uplift is for benefits, just to get a sense. In one page, to look at the whole town, everybody that works here, all the payroll expenses, which constitute about 80% of what we spend, and just get a relative sense of that. I began to do it. It was very helpful to me. We had some questions about what it would cost to add a person, and I was, I knew what that would cost, because I, on average, I knew what those costs would have been. So, I mean, it was very helpful to me to get that kind of perspective.
It seems to me, we have everything on the town side.
Yes.
Because there are no unionized. So, these are all the non-union.
Well, we've got the police.
Police are unionized.
Police and the dispatchers are unionized.
Ah, sorry, police, okay.
If you get this for all town employees, that would be great.
Sure.
It would be good, just in making decisions, just to know the impact of this.
Yeah, to be transparent, sure.
Yeah. But I guess my question is, do you really want to know the name of everybody? Or do you just need to know, like, the subtotal of, you know?
I don't think that it, I don't think it hurts to have this for everybody, does it?
Okay, I just don't, you know, not quite sure what you're.
What's your concern? Because the only thing we're adding is the.
School.
The school, right. Everybody else is here.
Well, then you're, no, well, you're adding the unions, but the unions, the thing is, you know what the rate is. So, that's why I'm wondering if you really need all that.
Are the unions not on here?
No.
They are.
They are here.
Police, union.
Police union is on here, okay.
Yeah, all the unions.
You don't need to approve them. They're just, this is the list Priscilla developed.
This was excluding those employees under contractual arrangements and those union-represented employees. That's what this.
I think that that's, I think that that's.
You're approving.
I think that that's because even though they're listed here, we're excluding them because we're not approving those. Those have already gone through.
All right, okay, all right.
So, we, we don't, we don't need to approve those, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
All right.
It's just the non-union employees.
It's just because there's more on here than what we're approving.
All right, got it.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the proposed fiscal year 2019 payroll changes dated 5/22/18, excluding those employees under contractual arrangements and those union-represented employees.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, now we get to appointments and reappointments. So, I think we, I think we should totally skip those people who are no longer interested in being on any board.
Especially the ones sitting in the room.
And ignore their request and put them wherever we want to. I did, I did just have a quick question, Tim. As I was, as I was looking through this, I didn't know if maybe we had talked about it in the last meeting that I had missed, or have all the people here that we would be appointing agreed to be appointed?
I think, except where noted, I think, first that the Housing Trust, we haven't heard from Steve Fulmer, so that one's not, we don't know for certain. But it's been indicated that she hadn't heard.
And is it, is it the individuals that we hear from, or is it that committee that we would hear from saying that we would like these people appointed?
We sent a memo out to the committee chairs, and I think they kind of take a survey of those that are up for reappointment, whether they want to continue.
Okay.
And those folks usually email us if they don't want to, or if they do, or they don't want to continue.
Did we get three emails from Bill Russo?
Separate emails.
At least one, I believe.
I had a personal conversation with him, however, recently, and it's my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that he's chosen to remain on the Housing Trust.
Steve?
No, no, Bill Russo, Bill Russo. That was, that was the body language I read.
That was my understanding.
I made that request.
As the chair of the, as the chair of the Board of Selectmen right now, I say that we do not take any input from the audience at this particular point in time.
We know where you live, Bill.
Is the local emergency planning council not an official town board or committee?
I'm sorry, which, which one?
Local emergency planning council.
Oh, local emergency.
It's not on the list.
Is an official committee.
It is, yeah.
It's not on this list. And there's no, and then I had heard that FENCOM had the name of a prospective person. That's not on here yet.
They do. They wanted to meet with that individual first to let them know what they're fighting up for.
Okay.
They'll recommend to you whether, you know, I imagine they'll recommend.
Can you remind me why some are in red?
Those are the reappointments, right? Those are the ones that would have been expired.
The ones that are bolded are the ones that are up.
And the ones that are in red?
I have a color in front of me.
Oh, those must be the bolded ones.
Oh.
Yeah, it's the term.
Yeah, okay. And we did get, at least, I got a copy of a memo that, I don't know if she sent it to you, Tim, asking for a prospective candidate for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay. I really, you know, the way it has always worked in previous years that I've been on the board is that these committees and trusts recommend who we appoint, and then we appoint them. I just want to make sure that we're following that, and we're not, so, not in response to what you're saying about the Housing Trust, but just getting back to my initial question. So, like, the Agricultural Commission has said yes to this, these people.
Well, right.
An email did go out to at least the dog committee?
Yeah.
And so, I mean, you know, I know, I know Jen followed up with Stacy, who, Stacy and Sukie, who were the chairs of the dog committee, and they asked if everybody wanted to be reappointed. Everybody said yes. So, my assumption is that she did that with every board.
That's what I was saying as well.
All right.
All right, that's great then. And then, just procedurally, I think in the past, some of, some of these people, we have done individually because of who they are, and then others we've done as a slate. And are we doing, but how do we do that? Do we just say those bolded and, or those, those in red when we're doing the slate? Because we don't want to, we're not reappointing everybody, right?
Right, right, just the ones that are bolded in the, you know, depending on the term.
Okay, so the first.
Last year, we did them, committee by committee, so.
If you make the reappointment.
So, if I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, in the past, the town officials, we've done individually, like you and the town accountant, Priscilla Myers and Harrington. Am I remembering right, or did we do, or did we do this as a slate separate?
I think you, you pointed town officials, I think you did as a block.
Okay, so I knew that we separated out something. So, we can, we can do this as a slate, and all of these people are fine being reappointed, and it's for one year, right?
So, you want me to just move that one?
Sure, and then we can move on.
So, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the list of appointed town officials as presented on 6/19/28, effective July 1st, 2018, for one year.
I would just, one slight amendment, if I could. We're not approving, it's just the Board of Selectmen appoint the town officials.
Okay. All right. That we appoint the town officials.
Second.
Okay, and I'm just going to, just for the record, just say, this is for the town administrator, town accountant, town council, finance director, police chief, fire chief, superintendent of public works, building commissioners, inspector of plumbing, gas pipings, and appliances, pump and well inspector, wiring inspector, inspector of animals, dog control officers, field driver, keeper of the town flag, keeper of the town clock, procurement officer, personnel administrator, veteran agent, and four people to a one-year term as constables, just so that anybody watching understands what we're doing. Okay, so there's a first and second. Is there any discussion?
The veterans' agent is vacant, does that?
As of June 30th.
As of June 30th, okay.
All right, so we need a veterans' agent.
And, yeah, because this is as of July 1st.
Right, so we're, so we're, so we're appointing nobody in that particular role.
We're appointing nobody in that, yeah, I just thought that was.
Yeah. So, we are looking for a veterans' agent. Okay, any other discussion? Good catch, thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? If that passes unanimously. And now we go to committees and other groups. Okay, so, what we have here, I know it's gonna seem a little bit cumbersome, but I'm not gonna read through the names, but I am just gonna read through the groups that we would be appointing, so that people on TV understand what we're talking about. The ADA Task Force, the Affordable Housing Trust, the Agricultural Commission, the Audit Committee, the Board of Registars, Celebrations Committee, Communications Department, Community Preservation Committee, Conservation Commission, Conservation Restriction Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Cranberry Bog Alternatives Committee, the Cultural Council, the Deer Committee, the Dog Control Committee, the Energy Task Force, the Finance Committee, the Historical Commission, Household Recycling, Land Stewardship, Long-Term Capital Requests Committee, MAPS, Municipal Facilities Committee, Pathways Committee, Two Personnel Board, Recreation Commission, River Stewardship Council, Senior Tax Advisory Committee, Scholarship Advisory Committee, Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, Trails Committee, Veterans Committee, Youth Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, of these, we still need a lot more participation in town government. So, as we were, as I was, all of those that I read. as we were, as I was, all of those that I read through, not, not every name, if you could see the names, not everybody is being reappointed this year. Some of them, their appointment has not expired. And so we will identify that by just, if, you know, by saying that, that those in red are the ones that are being appointed or reappointed. I would like to just quickly go through and say that on the Affordable Housing Trust, we are, we have a vacant citizen at large position. On the Board of Registars, we have two vacant positions.
I have one candidate for that.
Okay, Celebrations Commission, we have one.
The Deer Committee has had a resignation, but that hasn't been communicated formally yet.
Okay.
So we will have one.
So we will have one on the Deer Committee. And on the Finance Committee, there are two positions. On the Historical Commission, there is an alternate available. On the Municipal Facilities Committee, there are two alternates available. Though this is one of the reasons why I kept asking if this had gone through approval, because I see that I'm here as a full rep, and nobody talked to me about it. Let's see, the Personnel Board has one vacant. Recreation Commission has one vacant.
At least in the show, you're expiring this year on that committee, so you've only got another week.
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
You've only got another week on that committee, you're expiring this year.
But I'm an alternate. Okay, the Youth Commission has one, and the Zoning Board of, Board of Appeals has one. So if anybody would like to get involved in town government, getting involved on some of these committees is a really, really great way to do so. So please reach out to either the Chair of that committee, which can be found on the, the town website, or reach out to Tim, and he can point you in the right direction, Bill.
I have a question. Master Planning Steering Committee, is that an official committee, or as a subcommittee of Planning Board, does it not need to appear here?
Subcommittee of the Planning Board.
Yeah, who, who, who appoints the Master Steering Committee?
I think the Planning Board does.
So that would be their list, but we should make sure it's on the website, that we would do the appointing. Okay.
And another question.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, just, so the Planning Board, the Planning Board, just, the Planning Board has the authority to appoint people to a town committee? Or do they recommend to the Board of Selectmen that we appoint to a town committee?
I think it's, I think it's an, an ad hoc committee appointed by the Planning Board. I don't know that it's a.
Yeah, if it's their committee.
Not a my law committee, or, yeah.
And then, right, there would be a Master Planning Committee later on, and so that would be an appoint, officially Board of Selectmen appointed one?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll go by what box says.
I think, I think we should have a conversation with the Planning Board about that, so that there aren't any toes stepped on, in case they think it's theirs and they.
Well, they definitely think it's theirs.
Yeah.
They're approved, they have approved, like, there are, I don't think there are two open slots for the seven-person committee. They've approved every, the other five.
Okay, could you reach out to George?
Sure.
Plus, I believe they envision an advisory committee of about thirty-five people as well.
Okay.
As well as a steering committee.
Yeah, we should just make sure that that's all on the same page, because we, we actually went, I could have sworn the Board of Selectmen actually appointed the, the initial planning committee.
The steering committee, you mean?
I could have sworn that that came through us and we did that, but I could be misremembering.
Well, we, as a board, were asked for a represent, who we wanted as a representative on that.
Okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, but let's, yeah, let's, so let's just make sure that we're procedurally following it properly. If, if, if they're gonna, if there's going to be a committee, and they're going to be making decisions, let's just make sure it's a properly formed committee.
Another question is, who's taking minutes tonight? Are you taking minutes?
It's right there.
Time for Cory.
That's, that's why I'm, that's why I'm saying, and it passed unanimously, and things like that, so that Jen will know.
Hi, Jen.
Get well soon.
She can always watch.
You're not the only one that gets to, you know.
All right, so.
Participate remotely. So we need a, a motion.
Yeah, so we are going to need a motion, and so. So why would my name be in red yet, say, twenty eighteen? Is that just a typo?
No, that's what your thing was, and nobody asked you if you would go for twenty nineteen.
But the red ones are the reappointments.
That's.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah.
Probably a typo?
Yeah. Yeah, because if, if, so, Facilities Committee, you're not, you're not on the Facilities Committee, so you wouldn't know.
All right.
Bill, were you on the Facilities Committee?
Yes, he was.
Who, who was the Chair?
Josh.
Did he, did he reach out and email folks? Oh, Jen emailed everybody.
She didn't hear back from Josh.
I must have been ignoring her.
Yeah, you ignored her, so she reappointed you.
All right, so. I mean, unless, and if somebody else would like.
You want me to take it, since I'm on long-term?
Unless somebody else would like to be on the, yeah.
I'll do it.
All right.
It kind of fits in with the long-term caps, so.
It does.
Okay, so. So we're, we're making a change, that Kate Reed, it will be the BOS rep. Now, that is currently an alternate, but.
Yeah, oh.
In this, it is not listed as an alternate, so you would be a full, a full participant in this.
Unless and until we find some, somebody else to fill that, and then I drop into alternate.
Right, so it would, Nathan Brown will be taken off, and Kate Reed, BOS rep, twenty nineteen.
I'll work on, I have a couple people that I've, I've been reaching out to and trying to, you know, massage new people, so I will reach out to these people again and see.
Yeah, and I'm just going to repeat, any one of these committees is just a really great way to start getting involved in town government. And every one of these committees has really, really great volunteers that would be amazing to learn from in, in volunteering for the, for the town.
Actually, Luke, would you ask Chris Floyd again? For, like, facilities?
Oh, facilities, yeah, I can, I can check him.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know.
Yeah, I'll give him a nudge or something.
Just a nudge.
Yeah, he said no, didn't he?
Well, he, when I asked him, he did.
He didn't say no, but he didn't.
He didn't say no, but he said, you know, but, you know. He's one of the ones I've been kind of, you know.
All right, so is there a motion to appoint the individuals in bold red on the town boards and committees and other group, and other groups document that we received tonight with the edit of removing Nathan Brown and adding Kate Reed for twenty nineteen appointment to the Municipal Facilities Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I just want, one, appointment's effective July first, twenty eighteen, presented, you want to add that little information that, on the.
Yeah, so, and that this, this will be effective July first, twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, so, with that done, we have some new kind of resignations that I would like to acknowledge. They didn't resign, but they did not get reappointed, because they chose not to get reappointed. So I do want to thank Michael Bishop for, how many years was he on FinCom?
Nine.
Nine years?
Nine years.
You know, for serving the maximum on the Finance Committee, truly amazing job there, really, really appreciate it, and wish there wasn't a nine-year max. On the Cultural Commission, Christine Lear, thank you very much for your service. And then, on three committees, the Affordable Housing Trust, the Long Term Capital Requirements Committee, and the Municipal Facilities Committee, obviously freeing up lots of his time for perhaps some boating activities and some work in the shop. We'd like to really thank Bill Russo for all of his work to the town.
Here, here. I need this for Wednesday, so.
And we'll start working on you again, like, tomorrow.
On your boat. So you're going to invite us all on your boat, so we.
Give him a little sabbatical, and then, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's tomorrow.
Give me until tomorrow. All right, let's move on. The Town Administrator's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item, as we have the recommendations from the Caroline Hill Scholarship Fund for the twenty eighteen nineteen academic year, I can pass around the committee's recommendations. I did notice that the award's total to nine thousand dollars, so we've got a typo in the motion. For a number of awards to local.
Two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, yeah.
Students attending college next year, and the committee's recommending a number of nine thousand dollars.
We already had this in our.
Yeah, it's in the back of the bag.
Oh, is it, is it in there?
Yeah.
Jen was in there today, I didn't know if she.
Yeah, she's.
Copyed that for you, but that, it does add the nine thousand, right?
It does, I just added it just now.
That changed, so.
It's always really exciting, just, you know, to get to do this, and to, to acknowledge also the achievements of the kids, and.
Here, here, yes.
Yes, I don't know what else to say.
Make the motion.
I move that the Board approve the award of nine thousand dollars in scholarships from the Caroline Hill Scholarship Fund for the twenty eighteen nineteen academic year to be dispersed as recommended by the Caroline Hill Scholarship Committee.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Congratulations to all the students.
Yes.
Yes.
Whose names we are not going to read, because they have not received.
We'll give a copy to Bob.
I made that mistake, won't you? Congratulations, what?
Oh.
Okay, so we won't say any names here, but congratulations to all you people. Bet you wish you knew it was you.
Wow, look at you.
Okay, let's move on. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry.
You have to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstaining? Okay.
Very good. Item two, Mayor, report the Board should designate one or more members to approve payroll and bill warrants, in the event that we can't get a quorum of you to come by and sign the warrant over the summer months. The past year, Luke and Kate have been designated by the Board. You could, you can, if you want to continue, that's fine, but Priscilla asked me to remind you to.
So this was, this was Chair and Clerk, right?
Yeah.
Last year. But that was because Vice Chair was not going to be here. So maybe it makes sense for you to be Chair and Vice Chair.
Was around.
That's fine with me, I'm around. I refuse to go anywhere this summer.
Yeah, but it was, you know, honestly, it was a good thing that we did it, because there were a couple of times where, you know, just everybody was gone.
Yeah.
You know, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a motion to designate Nathan Brown and Kate Reed to be able to approve payroll and bill warrants as necessary for this coming fiscal year?
I saw a move. Second.
Okay, just want to be clear that as necessary means not because it's convenient, but just because we really can't get everybody here.
Right, yeah.
And that if we do, if we do sign this, we will report on it.
At the latest meeting, right.
Any further discussion? All those in.
Well, just that last year, we did a kind of, I don't think we did it for the full fiscal year, we, because it got done sort of more late, but that this is for the full fiscal year.
Yes, no. Yes, okay, yeah.
Because it was a new thing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? It's unanimous, Jen.
Okay. Very good. Item number three, the Town Vault project is well underway at, at this point in time. Recall that this was funded by the CPC, I think, two town meetings ago, to catalog and archive the town's historical records, and also clean out a lot of non-historical records from the, the Town Vault, and I, I know Kate got a look at it today, and I think, I think you'd be amazed to see the transformation down there, so really, you know, kind of kudos to Senior Tax Worker, Charlene Hinton, no longer the Town Clerk, but seeing this project through nevertheless, and we'll have some good before and after pictures shortly, but you'd agree, Kate, that it's really, it's night and day.
It, it's amazing. And they promised me that it was, that next week it'll look even better than it looked this week. And, and to look at the junk pileout in the back, too, some of the things.
Actually, it's pretty nice-looking file cases out there, file cabinets.
We're going to offer those to other departments, but we may not.
Oh, they're coming back in the building.
Some of them I had to break into, because I couldn't find the keys for them. And so those are not so nice-looking anymore, but.
Yeah, but really, well worth doing. And they've actually gone beyond the vault, they're, they're cleaning up records in departments around town.
Yeah, they, they've gone above and beyond, and I would say that if there are other things, because we talked about digitizing some things, and I think they, they do some of that as well.
Yes, oh, yeah, they do.
And, boy, they.
A lot of this.
Super.
Work, that's great. Good.
It's surprising how many shelving units and file cabinets were in the back of it.
Yeah.
I was expecting to kind of see the building listing, because there's so much less weight in it.
Well, you couldn't even see those file cabinets before.
No, no.
So those are all from the vault?
Well, they all came out of the vault. They were all filled with things that are now.
Shredded.
Boxes that are nicely stacked on new shelving and, and in the database that the Town Clerk will maintain, and so she'll know, you know, if somebody's taken something out of there, she'll know who it was, and that they have to return it, and where it goes.
So the file cabinets were replaced with boxes?
Plus, plus, they're all of, the database will also, has a tickler file, so if there's a box that's now time to have it shredded, it can be then, it's, they're alerted, they can pull the whole box and shred the whole thing all at once.
Right.
And they were explaining to me that, that although right now it's sort of by department, in the future, it will no longer be by department, because as these boxes get pulled, and then you get a, a new slot, then whoever's box is next will go in that slot, but because it's in the database, you'll be, you'll know where to find your box. But this way, also, things won't start to pile up, because it'll always be, they'll.
That's awesome.
It, it's just amazing, I was, I was very impressed.
Great, and I never saw the vault before the work.
Oh, I, I did, and I, I needed to work in it a couple of times and finding things.
It's good advertising for them, so.
Yes, yeah.
I'll see it only, I'll see it only after the fact.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and now, item number four, informational only, you'll see two grant warrant notices in the packet for the Chinaw Grant that the Planning Board, Board of Health and COA were awarded, the Keringford Carnile application, also the Really Chest Award to the COA as well. And then, also for your information, the upcoming scheduled meetings of the Board of Selectmen, please let me know if any of these dates are problematic, or if you want to touch about a different schedule for July and August. Those are the second and fourth Tuesdays of each of those months. And you don't have to know, tell me now, but.
Yeah, so I was wondering, though, I think details were, are to be discussed in the executive session, but is there a need for us to meet to sign a contract with Tim, once that is finalized, before the end of the year?
Is there a question for me?
There's a question for everybody.
Is there a contract?
Yeah.
That needs to be signed?
Or what we can do is just authorize someone to sign it, so that Tim has a contract at the end of the year?
This is about the end of.
Oh, you mean Tim's contract?
End of the fiscal year.
Oh, 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 oh.
Oh, it's just Tim's.
Don't worry.
No, but I thought you just continued on, yeah. Right, there's something in your contract, though.
He would be employed no matter what.
Yeah, no, I mean, it'd be nice to have a. Continue at the same terms, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Successor.
Or, or, or.
Or, 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 or we could just say that the terms are retroactive to July 1st.
Yeah, I think that would be the best way, so.
So hopefully bring it to the next meeting and then just...
And it would just be retroactive to July 1st. You okay with that?
That's fine.
Sure.
Yeah, no need to schedule a special meeting.
So I might have a conflict on the 14th of August. I could possibly come if, you know, you didn't get a quorum, but I'd rather not.
I'm questionable on the 24th and 14th, but it's, it's depending on where we're, how far out of sea we are.
Yeah. In my case, in my case, it's my grandson in sailboat.
How far that new sail takes you.
Well, actually, I did check to see if my...
Are you a strong swimmer?
If my hotspot worked today, so it does.
I currently can do all those dates, but I do have a lot of...
A lot of places we go, we don't have any cell phone service, so...
Oh, you rule out, uh... Okay. So so far, we'll keep at these and we'll just play it by ear. So those dates are July 10th, July 24th, August 14th, and August 28th.
So not to, not to go back, but the complete street, or not complete streets, the CHINA? CHINA? Caring for Carlisle thing? Yeah, that, that's fantastic, so they got the full $30,000?
They did.
Yeah, so, so just to remind folks, yeah, this is for the part-time public health nurse, the implementation of the community center study, and then the alternative transportation services. So I think, you know, a couple of those things were things that, you know, I mean, the transportation thing, we had kicked around for a while. So I mean, it's great, instead of the town coming up with the initial...
I believe that it's gonna be at a year at a time, but, but based on adequate progress on both of those, it'll be funded for the second year.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's...
And so this is, I mean, as you're pointing out, this is a case where, you know, because of town resources, you know, the town decided not to fund the study, and here we're getting it through a grant.
Right, yeah.
And not having it hit taxpayer.
Right.
But I also want to point out that last night at the kickoff meeting, transportation and a community center were two huge themes for the master plan. So this comes at a really good time for that as well, so...
Yeah, no, exactly.
It really is really nice that we're...
Yeah, you can get some initial information, you know, and not at a cost to the town. But, but yeah, you know, and, and the three individuals, Lynn Fantasia, David Klein, and George Mansfield, who all, you know, put a lot of effort into this. Yeah, I mean, this is just great, saving the town some money, yeah. You're getting the process going without a town meeting vote. Always good. Sorry.
No, thank you. Are there any liaison reports? I haven't been to a single meeting.
I haven't either, but I have to say, I'm the Housing Authority liaison, and I will say my heart sank when I saw the last letter to the...
You weren't even mentioned in it, my name. Yeah.
And I am beginning to question whether we can move ahead with a facilitated meeting. I'm not sure that it's gonna be useful.
It's severely broken.
Yeah.
So...
So you had reached out to them, right?
I had.
And asked them if they wanted to, or when a good time would be, and what was their response to...
They wanted to do it, you know, ASAP, they wanted to do in June. We, we did have a name of somebody, Jennifer, start with...
Golson.
Golson. Tim, I don't know, reached out, I believe, to her.
Connected with her, but I don't yet.
I did.
Oh, you did?
Last year.
Yeah, okay, anyway, but nothing has been set up. But I've also, you know, talked to somebody that I know who is, teaches mediation. She was saying, she was wondering if it's useful to have two big groups, you know, eight people on each side trying to have a facilitated meeting, and that may be a better way of doing it would be appoint, let's say, one or two members from each team, then I guess within caucus, co-ed in caucus, you know, I don't know. I, at this point, I'm feeling quite disheartened about the whole process.
As am I, and I was named.
I know you were, but...
Other liaison reports, last night we had the ideas workshop for the Master Plan Steering Committee, sponsored a ideas workshop at the cafeteria at the Carlisle Public Schools. Ninety people attended. Each of eleven tables of nine people, or thereabouts, was facilitated by a leader. Jan, the, the chair of the program, made a presentation about just ideas that other towns and other countries are doing. I think help people think out of the box when they're thinking about what their, what their town to become. So the kickoff was, was very good. Some of the, the young people that were there as volunteers for community service served pizza to everybody, and that was well received. Everybody had a chance to discuss their druthers, what we think we like about the town, what we don't, what we think we want to become, what we don't want to become over the coming years. And as Kate mentioned, two of the six or seven themes that popped out included community, some kind of community center, not, not age restricted, of course, and transportation options, housing options, not necessarily subsidized housing.
Right, affordable, but not 40B, we're not talking 40B, alternative affordable ideas.
And, but the same themes, to kick it off, the same two themes that were present in the first, last time we did this in 1995, where we like our town because it's rural in nature and we love our schools, we like the open space and we love the schools. That hasn't changed one bit, and that's, so it was, it was a really well-attended, well-engaged kickoff, they'll be taking all the input and putting it together into a bundle, putting it up on the website, letting people look at it, and then scheduling other activities from there. One question they did ask as they adjourned was, do you think we can wait until next May to go to town meeting to ask for support for a consultant? Or should we have a special town meeting this fall? And everybody wanted a special town meeting, just about everybody wanted to get this thing rolling. So, anyway, most of the people that were there, I'd say 90% of them have served on a committee.
It was a selected group, you know, a target group.
But we do, you did get everybody's sign-in sheet and...
Yes.
So what I would say is, it would be nice for us to get, that's another, I will take it upon myself if necessary, if we could get a copy, find, you know, get the new people. I already have a lunch or some, or coffee schedule with one of the new people on Wednesday to try to talk them into something. He was another letter writer, by the way, to whom I responded personally. So I'm, you know, I'm trying to cultivate these people and get them in, you know.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
So if we could get that list, and I would be happy to go through it and get the non, you know, standard people, and I will call them up and see if they're interested. That's how I got involved. I stood up one, in one public meeting and asked a question, and that was all she wrote. They, they had me marked, and so I figured, you know, that's obviously the way to do it.
Jan Corneal, the chair, is a planner, city planner, that's her business. She has a consulting agency that does that, and she did a great job in getting it kicked off.
And I think we're gonna have a spring, or rather, a fall town meeting, anyway.
Yeah.
Pretty quick, pretty quick.
So last week, just want to report that I signed for the, as an applicant for the special permit for the safety tower project. And I believe that the public hearing is Monday, is that right?
I think that's right. The 25th, right?
So, so as applicants, I mean, I, I will try to go, but, and we of the Board of Selectmen are the applicants of that, so please feel free to attend the planning board meeting that, that special...
The communications tower?
Yes, it's just for the communications towers. So there, there are three towers that are part of that, one at the fire station, one at Bantat Davis, which is the biggest one, and then one out...
Concord North.
No, Chelmsford.
Chelmsford.
Chelmsford line. And so notices went out, including two neighbors in Chelmsford. And so as the applicants, you know, we might, we might want to be here. I will try to be here on that Monday.
And would you remind me, are we planning on co-locating anything on those towers?
There's currently, the only, the only thing currently that, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, the only thing, I mean, what are we gonna do when he's not on all the committees and we can't look out there?
He's still gonna go to all the meetings.
Well, that's true, that's true.
I mean, look at how many selectmen meetings it's still coming to.
So the, the, we did offer to Chelmsford Fire and Police that at any time, if they want to extend to that pole, they may do so.
I was thinking more in terms of AT&amp;T and Verizon.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any...
They pay better, yeah.
I'm not aware of any AT&amp;T or Verizon, I'm not even really sure that any of them are located in places and make a huge difference over where they currently are because they can be in FRS already, and they...
There's nothing to preclude it.
There's nothing to preclude it, but there's no, there's no plan right now. Nobody has come forward and said we would like to, right, Phil?
But maybe we need to let them know that we're doing it, maybe they don't know.
Oh, I think they know. They, they know because there was a pretty big discussion about that with FRS and Bantat Davis with, was that Verizon?
Yeah, I'm surprised that, yeah, that, okay. All right.
So that they, I'm pretty sure that they're aware of that.
Okay.
I think that that's the only, only action I've taken as the chair that you all may not have known about, was that application. I would like to, since we're talking about liaison reports, I, and we were just talking about goals. Between now and our next meeting, I would like everybody to really be thinking about the fire chief, finding a new fire chief. I, I believe that what we should do is put together a search committee of representatives of, you know, I'm just gonna throw out there, representatives of the fire department, you know, citizens at large, you know, probably a couple from the Board of Selectmen, maybe somebody from the police department.
I think, I'm not think, I'm sorry, sorry for interrupting, but the planning board, because the fire chief has to, you know, weigh in on all the plans for instance.
So let's think about, think about who, you know, between now and next meeting, think about who you think would be on this search committee. And also, I think that what we will probably want to do, and Tim, maybe you could help us find somebody, but find, find a consultant to help us find.
Oh, sure.
You know, somebody to work with the search committee to help us find the new police chief and...
Fire chief.
Yeah, whoa, we do not want a new police chief.
But if it worked well, we'd be hired a firm to, a police chief on it.
I just want to be clear, we're happy with a police chief. So, you know, and Chief Flannery is going to be sending me over some job descriptions and of, and some towns that have gone through this recently that we may be able to, to learn from. But I really want us to ramp that up really quickly. So let's try to, I'll try to, you know, we can't do it remotely, let's... So on July 10th, let's try to really narrow, nail down what the steering committee would look like. I, I can work with Tim and try to come up with like what a charter would be that we'd be able to, and then maybe we can just move forward right away, trying to get this process going as quickly as possible.
I have a question. Our current police, uh, fire chief is also our, the school facilities manager, and I assume that the next fire chief will only be a fire chief.
Well, what we have been talking about is, and I guess as, I think as a board, we have actually talked about it a lot previously, but since it hasn't happened, I guess this board could overrule it. But we, we have been talking about making it a full-time fire chief.
Okay.
Somebody who's really managing, it is not, we will not be looking with the school for another person to do both roles.
Okay, so that, that's, that was part of the focus of my question. The second part of that, then, is does that necessitate our going to personnel board for a rewrite of the job description?
Yeah, so I, I think that we will want to go to the personnel board. I think that what we would do is rewrite it and then have them take a look at it, though.
Okay, I know, but I just wanted to know what the process was gonna be, and I want to make sure that we have it.
Although I'm not, I'm not sure if that role is under their purview, but I think we certainly would want to run it by them anyway.
Again, other previous, so you've determined that there is a full-time job to be done there?
Yes, I mean, that was the recommendation that was provided almost a year ago now to the Board of Selectmen. We can have that discussion again and, and go through why that was our recommendation.
It was more than a year ago because I wasn't on the board when you had that discussion, so...
Yeah, we probably ought to do it again, then.
It's unfortunate that you have to revisit it, but, but...
Well, or at least, maybe something should open and close, but at least we know, we know what the rationale is.
It must have to be reviewed, if not, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, in fact, it was before any of the three of you, oh, four of you were on.
Okay, so, oh my God, I'm on...
Probably a good idea to renew.
Just saying, you know, so I'd say that we have to revisit that.
But just so, as you're thinking about this, you know, the idea is as a full-time chief, you know, I think that we should hire a consultant to help us with the search. We should put together a search committee, think about who you think should, you know, would represent that, not the people, but, you know, the, the groups. And I'd like to try to get it as packaged as possible on July 10th.
Okay.
Sounds good.
You want us to submit stuff?
Yeah, submit it to Tim. Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Okay, let's go ahead and jump over to minutes.
There was one...
We're not leaving, we're not trying to just keep delaying it, delaying it, delaying it, but being a public information session, really thought we should wait till eight fifteen. Okay.
There was only one typo that I could find, and that was on the second page, the name of Stamsky, Stamsky and McNary, there's an extra P in the Stamsky that doesn't belong there.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Jan, my input.
I missed that one.
Did they get incorporated? Were they typos or were there substantive things?
There was one typo and one subsequent, typo was it...
Let's just make sure your changes are in here, Carrie?
Yeah.
Yep, she's got that, she did. Yes, she's got them.
Okay, so then we see them and nobody objects to them for whatever reason.
All right.
I move approval of Board of Selectmen minutes of Tuesday, May 29th, 2018, as...
24th.
Oh, well, there's another typo then, May 24th.
Yeah, there's another typo. One of them's wrong.
One of them's wrong.
Are you sure it was the 25th?
I'm just reading it here.
I think it was the 29th.
It was the Tuesday, obviously, right?
Yeah.
I wasn't here, so I'm off the hook.
Yeah, no, I wasn't here either.
So I didn't catch that one. Okay, so, all right, so there's the first line, the Board of Selectmen met on Tuesday, May 29th, and not May 24th. So I move that the minutes of the Board of Selectmen Tuesday, May 29th, be accepted as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay. I did just want to quickly ask, because it said Center Park in here. Have you had any communication at all with Sabrina about how she's coming and putting together committee?
No.
Cause we did have a very hard date, hard stop date for her, December 31st.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
Okay.
I know she's, well, she's been very actively involved in getting, whipping it into shape and, it's gonna be, there was a scheduled event on it last week, there's another one scheduled for Sunday. But in terms of a formal committee or not-for-profit organization, I haven't.
There's been nothing, okay. Okay. We should remind her.
I will do that, I will.
I just don't wanna.
No, you're absolutely right, I just.
We, we had a hard, you know, if there is nothing in place by December 31st, we're.
It looks marvelous, by the way, if anybody's been over there to take.
She's working hard on it.
Yeah, it really does.
Okay, so, anybody have anything else? We have five minutes. I'll just repeat again, you know, for next time, we're gonna be going through the goals, we're gonna be going through the liaison assignments, and we will be talking about the succession planning for the fire department.
Do you want us to send our ideas for goals to Tim as well?
I think that would be great. Anything that we have ahead of time that can be in the pocket that other people could be looking at prior would be, that's a really great idea, Kate. So.
I'll just type this up.
Okay, so what we have left is the municipal aggregation and executive session. I'm gonna say that we are close enough to eight fifteen, cause it will probably go.
Yeah.
So, why don't you come on up? And Bob, why don't you come on up? Come on up. Bill?
Hey, Mark.
And I'm sorry, were you here for a particular agenda item, or?
Yeah, just the, it was a, right, there was a Q and A and.
Yep, that's perfect, we're just starting that now.
Okay.
All right. Yeah. Okay.
So, Mark Capital, Colonial Power, 277 Main Street, Marlboro. I'm just here to get kind of informational, everyone that should have, be participating in the program should have got a mailing over the last couple of weeks. Normally takes within five days, everyone gets it in town. So if you haven't received a, a mailing, you can certainly contact the town, who, who will give you our number, so we, we can get you enrolled in the program. More likely than not, there's two reasons why you, you didn't receive the mailing. One, you're on a competitive supply, so we wouldn't have your information, or two, you have a block on your account, meaning that nobody can mail to you. Completely your, but if you wanna join, you certainly can do so. There's just a, the utilities don't give us accounts that are blocked or that have a, a competitive supplier. Not that those, the people in town can't join the program, it's just that we don't, we don't get the information. At, at this time, everyone, again, should have the mailing, and on their July media reads, they're going to see a, a note on the, on the bill saying that they're being switched to Public Power. That will happen seamlessly, it doesn't require anyone in town to do anything, so that everyone knows, let me just grab the sheet here. The town has chosen for its opt-out product, it's a thirty-month fixed rate at ten nine eight one, it's a national wind product, and it is below the basic service rate, about four percent savings. So, that's the opt-out product, meaning it's going to be a hundred percent green with, with national wind. If somebody was looking to do something a little bit cheaper, there is an opt-in product that would require a phone call, the number is on that information that you receive. A simple phone call to the supplier, which is Public Power, and they can opt you into that product. It, it's a slightly lower rate, the, the rate is at ten eight seven, I believe. Which is just slightly below that, but that doesn't have the green component that the opt-out product does. Other than that, this rate will be stable, it will not change for the next thirty months. So right now, it will, it will take place, starting with the July media read, go all the way through nineteen and twenty, and January of twenty-one. We would be back out to bid, but there'd be a new rate for the aggregation program at that time. Again, all of this is stated in that literature that you should have received. If people do have questions, please call Colonial Power, cause we have your answers.
I had a question that was asked today, and I didn't have the answer, and that was, am I gonna continue to get one bill, or am I gonna get two bills now?
Single bill.
Single bill, okay.
All of the benefits or ease that you're using, if you have automatic billing or budget billing, or any of those, say you get a low-income discount, you're gonna receive all of those benefits. Those are all distribution company benefits or ever-source benefits that you'll continue to receive. Single line item change in the bill, where it used to say basic service, it will now say Public Power, Carlisle Ag.
Okay.
That will be the only change you'll see.
All right, that's, that's, that's nice, because.
Yes.
So what, what, what happens if you have a, if currently if you have a credit?
If you have a credit on your bill?
Yeah.
You'll continue to have that credit on your bill, it's just that, I'm assuming you have that credit, and the reason you have that credit is cause you have solar panels, either that or a budget bill. So you'll continue to receive that, that credit because it's a, it's a utility credit, and you'll just be paying a little bit less for your electricity. So you'll be eating up that credit a little bit less than the eleven three nine seven, you'll be eating that credit up per kilowatt hour at the, at the ten nine eight one, if you stay in the program.
Okay. Credit's gonna go a little further.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, when this first came out, there was a, some discussion and questions on the City in the Woods Yahoo group. And one of the things that I noticed was that the, while, you know, it, it is here in this, in the letter, the, the link to the, the website was there. But I did not see the link to the website from the town website. Have we added that yet, Tim?
Have we launched our new website?
I think, I think that we had.
Cause it wasn't as of, when this le, when the letter went out, it, I, I couldn't find it on the website.
Okay, I'll check into that.
So I just sent, I, I sent the link out to the Yahoo group, but it would have been good to send out the town website that had the link to Colonial Power.
Yeah, yeah. By way of information, the new website launches Thursday afternoon, and I'll, I'll make sure it's, you know, if the information is there.
Okay.
Is it this week?
Yes.
Yeah.
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
And that's another great place to get information, is, is on our website, at colonialpowergroup.com, and choose Carlisle. All of that same information in that letter is out there, plus more. Basic service rates, information like that, it's, it's all out there.
So in this letter, one of the things was that, which kinda threw me off a little bit because, and, and you just, you just said what I thought was the case before. But it says here that if you've chosen a competitive supplier, you must opt out of the program. If you've already chosen green power, you must opt out of the program. What we had heard before, and, and what you just said is that that's not the case, but I guess it is the case if you received the letter and you signed up for one of those two.
It's utility-grade data, let's just say that you signed up with any other supplier right before this, this mailing went out. We asked the utility, please give us your basic service customers. They tell us that you're a basic service customer, so your transaction happens on every aggregation. There might be one or two customers that has just recently signed a private contract. The utility knows you as a basic service customer, so if you've received this, we didn't know, it's erroneous, and, and every once in a while, I end up getting involved, and I, I'll call on behalf of the, the customer to make sure that they stay in the program. Because unbeknownst to them, they were, they were being switched when they didn't even know they were gonna be switched.
Right.
In a sense, just so you, but if you receive that mailing and you know you've signed a contract or you shouldn't have received it, please opt out because you're receiving that because we believe you're a basic service customer.
Okay.
That's what the utility is telling us.
So, it, just to be clear, it's, it's saying that if we've, if I've already chosen a competitor, competitive supplier, I must opt out. However, that's only because I have received this letter, it's not anybody in town who is a competitive supplier.
That's correct.
If they have a competitive supplier, if they have not received this letter, they might, they, they need to do nothing unless they wanna opt in.
Out.
Opt into this.
Oh, that, that, correct. Well, they don't need to do a thing to opt in, it's an opt-out aggregation. If they do nothing.
If they, if they already have a competitive supplier and they did not get this letter, they have to do nothing unless they want in.
Hundred percent correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. And you had a question, sir, if you could just, if you wouldn't mind just coming up here, because it's televised and we just want people to be able to hear you. And just say your name and address.
Yep.
Garangshoff, Noble Farm Road. I had a question, I, I got, like, there's enough information in the letter and on the website. Also, one thing that I couldn't find an answer to was, we have so, solar panels, so in the event that there's a net metering positive, meaning we've generated more in a month than what we've consumed. That power is bought at a certain rate. Is that bought by ever-source, or would it be the new ag program that will buy that piece?
So it, it will always be the utility, so I just need to explain, so it's, the knife cuts both ways, sir.
Yeah.
If, if you create a credit, you're going to receive that credit at, at the basic service rate, you have a contract with the utility right now.
Correct, yeah.
So they're gonna credit you at the basic service rate, which is eleven three nine seven.
Yep.
As you're using your power right now, if, if you stay in the opt-in, you're gonna, you're gonna be using it at ten nine eight.
Yep.
It's a win-win for you right now.
Right.
Let's just say the aggregation rate is gonna stay here at, at the, at the ten nine eight. For some reason, basic service came down below that, I'm just gonna use ten cents.
Sure.
You would be paying for your electricity at the, at the ten nine eight one, but they would be crediting your bill at ten cents. Kind of a, it flips around, you'd be paying more and getting less on the credit. You wanna opt out at that time, then you could opt back in. Do you see what I'm saying?
No.
So, but that's, that's a very unlikely scenario.
It's a very, especially with this contract, overall, I expect there to be savings and plenty of it, but what I'm saying is, let's just say, next summer, their rate was ten cents, and we were still paying the, the ten nine. Ever-source would be crediting your account for anything that you generated more than you were using at that ten cents.
Yep.
But the aggregation would still be charging you the ten nine eight one.
So essentially, ever-source is the one that's buying and that's their rate. Now, does, so my question.
Always basic service.
Yeah, but, so, does their rate, is their rate that they pay me contingent on whether I'm their basic customer versus an act?
It is not. They, they just always play, pay basic service.
Okay.
They will always pay basic service.
Yep, okay.
Doesn't make a difference who uses wires.
Yep, that, that answers the question. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
He's actually gonna make money on this, Dave.
Yeah, he's gonna make money on this.
He's gonna make four percent a month.
Well, well done. And save four percent.
And save, save four percent, yeah.
Okay, any other?
It's amazing the number of questions that ooze out of the system, and we start, you know, pressing into it.
Why pressing has gotten complicated.
Extremely complicated. I, I will say, it has been extremely quiet, and I, I called the call center prior to coming down, and there's only been a very few amount of calls. So it seems to me like the information has got out to, to the people that are engaged in the community. So from Carlisle, we received very few calls. So overall, I think people understand the program, or they just put it in the trash, one or the other.
Recycling, it's Carlisle.
Right, recycling, correct.
I put mine in my trash because I wanna keep it.
There's a very good article in our local paper, The Mosquito.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Did a very nice educational job, and people, I think, understand it.
I, I, I would agree. We're just not getting the call volume that we normally would see out of a community this size.
They'll probably pick up after July first.
It's possible to, that's possible.
What is this new thing I'm saying in this one line?
I have a couple of questions, Bob Zug, nine two three North Road. So one question has to do with the reporting that you're going to provide to Carlisle. What does that look like and how frequently does that happen?
So we can deliver after, we can deliver all the estimates on a monthly basis, and I'm happy to show you another town, kind of how we show by, by meter in class. So it would show residential, commercial, industrial, then it would show kilowatt hours, kind of straight across the board, broken up, not, not individual, but by class.
Right, right.
Yes. How many meters and how much usage they had.
Okay. And how often does that come to Carlisle?
That, that, we normally deliver that information on, on a quarterly basis, but I'm saying to you, we, we try to compile on a monthly basis. So if it was something that you wanted more often, it's not like you couldn't get the information.
Quarterly's probably good, and.
Yep.
And how, so that would go to Tim, or how would?
Normally, Tim will receive a, a report on a quarterly basis, but I'm happy to deliver that information. All I need is a list of people, public information, there's, there's, there's nothing proprietary about it. So we're happy to deliver it to anyone that needs or wants that information.
Yeah, I'd like to be on the list.
Absolutely, not a problem.
And so would it also list, because there's, obviously, there's two different rates people could be signed up for, or does it indicate how many people are within each rate?
As a matter of fact, it will. Yes, it will.
So we could see changes for each quarter, how many people switched in to the program or out of the program, or went from the green to the low cost, for example?
So, you'll be able to see the movement in numbers, but you wouldn't know if I, Mark, moved from.
Right, right.
But you would be able to see the movement.
So both in terms of numbers of meters and kilowatt hours?
That's correct, yes, you will. Yes.
Excellent.
Yep.
That sounds good.
And does it also track the regular rate, the standard rate? I mean, does that?
Uh, we will, we can, I'm just trying to think on the report, I believe it does show savings, these are the basic service.
That would be good.
Yes.
Good line to have.
We would like probably to see every six months, when ever-source changes their rate.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
It shows so that we can let everybody know that, hey, the basic rate is now this.
Yeah.
Because they, ever-source does it, but it's kind of after the fact and hidden, kind of, but we would like to make sure.
When rates are coming down, they, they announce it from the rooftops when they're going up, you won't find it.
So it's easy for our customers, you know, our citizens to be able to say, hey, ever-source, this next six months, we should opt out. And that's what I like to see, so it's there.
Yeah.
Not a, and just so everyone knows, the answer is absolutely. It's always on our website, we keep a link to where basic service, where they have to update their rate. So if you go on our website and you click, and you click on ever-source, it'll bring you right to the link for residential and commercial rates. But I agree, if somebody, we do it all day, so it's easy for us to push the information, then it's front, for you, and then you, you could push the information. People might not be thinking about electricity rates, that's what we do.
Right.
We do think about it.
One, one other question. Thank you for your email. I asked you a question about the retirement of the.
Yes.
National REX. And so you said in your email that absolutely the, the renewable energy credits are retired, not exactly when we purchase them, but later, they're retired. But when you sent me the paragraph from the contract, I didn't quite read it that way, and I, and it could be, you know, I'm not an expert in contract language. But when I read that paragraph, it, it didn't seem to say explicitly that those REX would be retired. The reason it's important to retire the REX is because this renewable energy could be sold twice if the REX associated, associated with it aren't retired. And so, you know, I never saw the contract, and I, quite frankly, I might not have been smart enough to look for that in the contract at the time, had I read the contract. But, so, that's, I, I'm just saying.
Great question, yep.
Paragraph, I didn't, it didn't say the same thing to me that it says to you.
So it's one of the things that the DPU has requested, that language is kind of standard across the board, because to your point, there was a lot of the shenanigans going on, that people would double sell the REX. So from an RPS standpoint, and I, and I don't mean to get kind of pasty with you, but from an RPS standpoint.
RPS is?
Uh, the Renewable Portfolio Standard.
Okay.
Right, so that's required inside the energy. You took a step forward and you said, I wanna have a hundred percent renewable. So the, I'm gonna say the twenty-one percent, well, it's, it's gonna be twenty-three, but the twenty-one percent right now that's, that you have to purchase with your energy, that has to go into the DOE R, and they check it off. If not, they couldn't serve energy in, in ISO New England, Massachusetts, it's a requirement. Now, I did a little further search for you. What we're asking for is what they call a voluntary rec. They call it a V rec. And the reason it's voluntary is, the Department of Energy Resources says this much has to be here, and it has to be here by June of the next year, so. this much has to be here, and it has to be here by June of the next year. So, your energy's going to start in July 2018. Public Power is going to be required to put in and report to the Department of Energy Resources exactly how many REXs they retired, what type they retired, so forth and so on, by June of next year. If not, they'd be in violation, and they wouldn't be allowed to serve any longer. And they're very tight on that date. It was actually last Friday. If you hadn't done it, you had to pay ACP, and if you didn't do it by this Friday, you're out of business. That, that's just how stringent it is. Now, we are talking about the renewable energy credits that are above and beyond RPS, and those are not policed anywhere. But we require the supplier to buy those REXs and retire them in their GIS account at ISO New England. So, I think the best thing I can do is show you your load inside that load asset with those retired REXs when the time comes. So, there's some games that people can play. I'm going to be completely upfront. V REXs are not as stringent as the Renewable Portfolio Standard. According to the, the bylaws that are out there, as long as they procure at some point in time during your, your contract, they're not in violation. So, they could buy all the REXs the last day of the contract, and they would not be in violation.
Okay.
But it sounds to me like we'd like to do something annual, so I'm going to reach out to Public Power and say, we would like proof of retirement on an annual basis, that these REXs have been there and they are retired. I can tell you, I have another town that asked for that exact same thing, different supplier, so I haven't had this conversation with Public Power, but let me bring it up, and I think that they will, and I think it's actually a worthwhile conversation to make sure that there aren't any games being played.
Okay. Well, that's great, thank you.
No, you're more than welcome.
Any other questions?
Did you get all that?
Yeah, all good. I know that RPS stands for something that made sense when he told me, when he said it. So, there is, is there one more public information session? Because there were going to be two in June, right? Or did I miss one?
No, I haven't heard of any others. I can tell you, I'm more than willing to come to another, or two, or whatever you feel like you need.
I think we're playing round one, but we can have another.
I thought that the website in this said that there would be two.
And if you'd like to have another, you just tell me the day and the time, and I'll be there, or the night.
I can't believe it.
I'm pretty sure that I saw somewhere that there were going to be two.
For us, we don't have an amount.
Okay.
It's completely up to the town.
And, and was this considered the newsletter that was going to go out?
Wouldn't, that's the Department of Public Utility...
Right.
Standard form and content that has to be there.
Okay, I just remembered that what, what, what there was going to be for public outreach was, I thought it was two public information centers, sessions, a newsletter, and then the letter. Am I misremembering?
Well, we punted something to the Energy Task Force, right? But I think it ultimately ended up in The Mosquito, right? There was a, the nice write-up in The Mosquito. The letter, the, the initial draft letter that would have been sent. I remember punting something to you guys, because I know I didn't take it on. No, it was, it was an informational letter, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't say about anything about...
I think the Energy Task Force was going to put something together.
Find the minutes.
We'll find the minutes.
Hasn't been a lot of activity.
We were told that that wasn't allowed.
Correct, which is unfortunate, but the department doesn't want to use this as a marketing program. It's simply informational.
Do you know how many people have opted out at this point?
I don't, but Tim will get that, sometime this week, I can ask.
Okay.
We can certainly deliver that information. The supplier will know.
We could have another session maybe two or three months from now to see.
Yeah.
Absolute, yeah.
Could you just take a look at the Colonial Power website and just make sure that doesn't say there that there were two? I read somewhere that there were going to be two informational sessions and a newsletter.
We can make that happen for certain.
Yeah, I just...
Was it in the first release?
Because we should...
It went to the paper?
Yeah, it might have been on the paper.
Well, just because if there is, we should announce it now, right? Because we have everybody who's interested in it here.
I saw it in The Mosquito. This, the letter, I don't know if the cover letter had it, but, you know, certainly this does not have anything.
Uh-huh, right. And so, in The Mosquito, did you see that, that there were two?
I don't remember that.
Okay.
The Mosquito, the, the last article indicated only one.
Only one?
This one.
Okay, all right, then I am mistaken.
That's the Mosquito article.
Well, it's in The Mosquito.
It's got to be fair.
Must be real.
No, that's from The Mosquito.
The only real news in all, all the whole United States.
Unless it's in a letter.
Okay.
The tape, I didn't say. We also, we made rounds pitched out to the Council of Aging, and anyone who wanted to get the cheapest rate, we're helping out with them.
Okay.
So, to explain basically how, how they get that, by making phone calls.
Great. Great.
Yeah, was that going in the COA newsletter?
I think Angela was just trying to put something together. I gave her some information in, in this basic letter, and she had asked me to write something up, but I don't know when that, that's going out, so I'm not sure.
Just got one.
Yeah, we just got one, not so, last, last week, yeah. Probably another month.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, our final agenda item is to go into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation and non-union bargaining, not to return to open session. Oh, sorry. I move that the board enter the executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. I don't want to read that, do I?
Yeah, you do.
Oh, for J.J. Supple, and to discuss strategy with respect to non-union bargaining as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's litigating position, and that afterwards, the board will, will return to. Yeah, but that was...
We...
It will not return to.
I, I don't think we're going to return, not to return, not to return to open session.
Yep. Not unless we want to just chat. Okay, first and second, any further discussion?
Have a good night, Bob.
Bye, Bob. All those in favor, brown eye?
Aye.
Red eye?
Kissing your eye.
Oscar the eye.
Lewis eye.
Okay, thank you very much.